And ask for confirmation of appropriate meeting notices.
Agendas are posted at Dave's Ace Hardware, Milton Pigly-Widley, and the Shaw Municipal Building.
And welcome, citizens, and address anyone who has a question that's not on the agenda. Seeing none, I will vote item three, consent agenda.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All business, discussion of possible action on clarifiers covered, cover bid. We need a motion on that?
Mm-hmm.
First, propose.
Second. A motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All in carry. Okay, item B, discussion of possible action to approve revised Arrowhead Library System lease.
Madam President, the reason for this being on the agenda is we had a request from Arrowhead after the last lease agreement that you had approved and its parameters were two what I would consider relatively minor language changes, but still wanted to make sure that you were comfortable with them. The first one was a change in the payment due date. In the original contract, we had, you know, payment was due on the first and then it was considered late if not received by the tenth. The way that the Arrowhead Library System works is very similar to our library board. It approves expenditures in advance of making them, and so sometimes their meeting date isn't until the 12th or the 15th of the month and they didn't want to be considered late in their payment. So in order, their board actually approved their expenditures and they asked to have it be not considered late until not paid after the 20th. So that change is made. And then the other component that they requested was a final section that was added is if, for some reason, the Arrowhead Library System were to merge by changes in state statute, which had actually come up at two state budgets ago, that they would be able to get out of their, the lease commitment. So for some reason, Waukesha County and the Arrowhead Library System were to merge and they became some new entity, they didn't want to be bound to this agreement. So I, I felt comfortable in that we would have enough advance notice in that that we could start shopping around for a tenant if a merger like that could see the parent. And I'm comfortable with recommending that we still approve the revised lease as amended. And that's why I'd be asking the council to approve.
Anybody have any questions? Can you, can you hold on?
I'll make a motion to accept the revised Arrowhead lease.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item four, discussion of possible action on Police Department IT needs.
Thank you. And the hard copy memo that's before you, and I apologize for it being in hard copy, but we just got the revised proposal shortly after five o'clock this evening. As has been discussed during budget development, as well as our project for the city's new police department and city administration and municipal court buildings, the servers in both the police station, which was purchased in 2003, and the server in City Hall, which was purchased in 2008, is in need of either substantial upgrade and/or replacement. We had StarTech, who did a site analysis on both servers, come up and put together a proposal. They're our contract IT firm, most familiar with our system and our network, and they presented at 11 o'clock this morning to Treasurer De Kemper and I, two different options. The first option is what I would refer to as the upgrade option. It's summarized in the memo that's before you, and that's an upgrade to the existing servers, and it would cost, a total project cost of about $21,000. And that, the anticipated shelf life of that, or service life of that upgrade, is estimated to be about two to three years with maximum of maybe four to five, however, with a substantial need for what is called STMS, or standard timed server maintenance. That takes place monthly, and then because we're billed by, by StarTech hourly, that $80 an hour monthly charge to maintain the server would be considered more expensive and we would need to annually budget more dollars to maintain the existing servers. Option B is the more expensive version, and that's replacement of the two servers, and that would service both the police department, City Hall, municipal court needs. It actually serviced the entire network. It would be housed at the new building. It could be housed in this facility, and then the other users would all remote in. That is a more expensive option. It's an estimated not to exceed $38,000 option, but would have a service life of somewhere between seven to 10 years, and would need substantially less annual and monthly maintenance to maintain the server because it's new. So I cannot make a, and I'm not asking for any recommended action tonight, because again, this is still all pretty new information. I just wanted to let you know that we're diligently working on it because the police department server is literally on its last legs. It's, uh, it's kind of like the building. It needs to go, and it needs to be replaced. And we'd like to have a recommendation to you by the November 19th meeting. Operationally, the preferred option is option B. We're going to put, you know, nearly two and a half million dollars into a new building. The last thing I want is to be operationally inefficient for all of our departments because the IT network doesn't work, or it needs to be constantly serviced. The other piece that I'm a little bit concerned about is operationally, we have to come up with those annual dollars in our IT budget, and if the server is costing us a lot to maintain, I think we'd often wonder, you know, wouldn't we have been better off to, you know, could we have spent that $17,000 and not that time and energy that it takes for our department managers to have to call StarTech, get StarTech out here, diagnose the problem, fix the problem, and then move forward? At $80 an hour over, you know, four to five to six years, it doesn't take long for us to get to that, that $17,000 difference. What's lost in between is the staff time that's taken to manage that crisis rather than to be doing their core functions of, of work. So the recommended action for tonight is simply to know that we're working on it, and if you're comfortable with pursuing an option B, which is the replacement option, that Connie and I would begin to work to look in the 2013 and 2014 budgets, to potentially maybe even spread this out over a two-year period, which they said they'd be willing to do. You know, 2013, maybe use some unused budget dollars, unused reserve that we have in 2013, and then in 2014, use some IT budget money so we can get the project done over two budget cycles. We will not know officially until all of the department directors get in their projected end of 13 budgets, and we're going to get that by the end of this week. And we should have an update for you at the November 19th meeting to know if there's going to be any capacity for the 13 budget to absorb some of this. We are not recommending the use of contingency funds at this time, because although we've experienced considerable savings in healthcare plan administrator switches, there still are some of our employees who chose a point of service option for which the city has a contractual commitment to honor for their plan. And if those events, such as surgeries or other, you know, major medical stuff, we may have to use some contingency fund to cover that. So, and I discussed with Connie, although we'll save over $100,000 or more in the premium piece, you know, we may have to experience, you know, some payment in 13 to honor our contractual obligations, and that's why we're hesitant on recommending any action on this at this point.
I'm just curious, did StarTrek, StarTrek, did they let us know last year that we were going to have to replace us? I mean, it seems to me like it should have been kind of predictable.
Yes, and it was a, at that particular time, not only a budget casualty, but a planning casualty, not knowing where we were going to be and where we were going to go. If we were going to do a new police station alone, that would require maybe different IT needs than doing this joint building together.
Jerry, we didn't have the cameras either.
Correct. Great point. Yeah, the, the new video cameras of the police department have also created new IT needs that we didn't have previously.
Any other questions?
Well, I guess my comment is option B, we say is more expensive, but actually it's cheaper when you look at the long run. It's cheaper, so I believe option B is the only option that we have if we can, if we can do that. I mean, that would be my...
Long-term, long-term.
Yeah.
If you build a new building and use old electronics, it's not a savings.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to recommend that staff continue with option B.
I make that motion?
Make that motion, I motion, do I have a second?
Third. The whole right side, the whole right side side.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, item business D, discussion of possible action on John's Disposal Service Contract for 214 to 217.
Thank you. At a special call meeting tonight, the city's Personnel and Finance Committee has recommended to counsel a renewal and new contract with John's Disposal Service to provide refuse and recycling services to the city of Milton and his residents for calendar years 2014 and 2017. John's Disposal has proposed no rate increase for 2014, and then rate increases, excuse me, tied to the Consumer Price Act index, but not to exceed 3% through calendar years 2015, 2016, and 2017. When this was originally proposed in budget development workshops, it was a five-year deal. The council had requested it to go back to a four-year deal, so John's Disposal has met that request. Included in that was the, the no rate increase for 2014. I did have Attorney Schrader review the proposed contract. Two language changes that he recommended, John's Disposal did include in the revised and final copy that you're seeing tonight, and so staff would recommend approval of the contract as presented. John did, or Brian from John's Disposal, their company's president, did call today and saying he would have liked to have been here at the meeting tonight, but he did have a scheduling conflict, so. I mean, if there are questions or concerns that you have, he said he'd be happy to answer them, but other than that, I think it's a very good contract, and I would recommend that the council approve.
Any questions? Motion, do I have a second?
Excuse me.
I have opposed. Item five, under, um, new business. A, discussion of possible action of adjusted 2013 Police Department Staffing Plan.
Well, as you know, we have two openings at the current time in the Police Department, and the staffing plan that we are seeking your approval to fund tonight would mean the promotion of one officer to lieutenant on December 1st. We had already started that process when Brad resigned, Brad Smith resigned, and I'm seeking their approval to actually go with two candidates for two positions instead of four candidates for two positions, as the current bylaws dictate to us. So if we get that permission, we, on November 14th, four candidates for lieutenant will interview. We would promote one on December 1st and one on January 1st as part of the proposal. We would also hire one full-time police officer on December 1st, who's currently a part-time officer for us, Zach Anaker, and Zach previously finished first on our eligibility list from 2013, actually 2012, December of 2012. And with filling that one position, then we would hire another LT January 1st off an eligibility list that we are going to create as I announced the opening today on Wisconsin Law Enforcement Network. And that person would be hired early January, they would be in an LTE position going full-time on July 1st to fill the second position. And so we have the family medical leave event, that would end on June 28th, so we'd be fully staffed on July 1st with the hiring of two new people and our unpaid leave person coming back. The vacancies that we're experiencing right now are being filled over time by hard-time officers by moving my schedule around to some night shifts, and so far, so good. Ryan Justice has been a huge help with the schedule. It, it's not an easy thing to plug in a bunch of openings when you have a bunch of people missing from a smaller department, so. This is our plan, and we're already started with a police commission for promotions and two very good candidates, very experienced and very well-respected in the department.
Anybody have any questions?
This plan was approved by personnel. Motion to approve the plan.
I second.
A motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, item five B, discussion of possible action on Police Squad Cars for 2014 Lease Agreement.
This is seeking council authorization to order two Ford Police Interceptors, and we would take delivery in mid-December of 2013, not make any payments until 2014. And the two vehicles would be leased to own, we would own them outright for $1 after three-year lease expires, and we are saving approximately $16,000 per year by leasing instead of purchasing with capital funds. And hopefully, this will reduce substantially our maintenance budget on our existing vehicles by plugging two new cars in and taking out two cars that were maintenance hogs put in my old.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Second. I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item five C, discussion of possible action of Hydro Designs Contract, Connie?
Um, staffs recommending that we, that council accept the contract with Hydro Designs. We could go out and spin, or go out for a question of the poll. They were the firm that we selected. This is the actual official contract with the firm. Mark has reviewed the contract, and both, all of the changes were made as Mark recommended. So we're just requesting that.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to accept the contract with Hydro Designs.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item five D, discussion of possible action to approve Freedom Graphics Option to Purchase City of Milton Property.
Thank you. This issue comes back before you as one of the contingencies that Attorney Schrader and I like to put into these agreements are making sure that the council approves the agreement in final. Freedom Graphics did agree to the provisions of our offer on the option to purchase the two parcels adjacent to the former Gateway Mattress Building. Their owner is closing on that property, I believe now probably already has, but they did agree to the terms that you previously outlined in the two city-owned parcels of the 1.3 acres and the 2.1 acres adjacent to the former Gateway Mattress Building. And all of those terms were approved by their leadership team, and we'd just like the council to officially approve the, the option.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion. I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item five E, discussion on possible action on intergovernmental agreement with the Town Harmony for directional sign placement at Town Line and Hanky Road.
Thank you. The Milton Area Chamber of Commerce and its ad hoc sign committee, when the Highway 26 bypass was completed, had pushed for additional directional signage along Exit 6, which is the Milton Harmony Town Hall exit, as well as additional signage within the city of Milton. Mayor Frazier and I met with DOT officials about three weeks ago now, and negotiated an agreement for which the DOT would pay for five additional directional signs, they're four feet by one feet. They say Milton on them with a white painted arrow that guides people which way to turn. And the DOT placed two of them in, on Milton Harmony Town Hall, or what's otherwise known as Exit 6. So when people are going off of there, just as they're coming up that ramp, you'll see a sign that says Milton and then which way to turn to get into the city, using that entryway into the city. Three additional signs that we're seeking placement for, two of them are in the Town of Milton, another one is in the Town of Harmony, and we've successfully, tentatively negotiated agreements with both the city of, I'm sorry, the Town of Milton and the Town of Harmony to place directional signs at Milton Harmony Town Hall and Town Line Road, which is in the Town of Milton, as well as Parkview Drive and Town Line Road, also in the Town of Milton, because a right-hand read is a little bit easier for drivers making that turn, with the understanding that, and then, I'm sorry, the final agreement would be with the Town of Harmony or Hanky Road, placed in the Town of Harmony, which would be on the south side of Town Line Road at Hanky, therefore making it easy for at all different access points and entrance points for motorists to know which way to have to turn to get into the city. The agreement with the Department of Transportation was that DOT would pay for all five of the directional signs and the posts, so long as the city of Milton would agree to install them and then maintain the signs after they're installed. It seemed like a pretty reasonable agreement for us because our public horse department puts up signs all the time, so they know how to do that. The thing that we had to do was also reach those tentative agreements with the Town of Harmony and the Town of Milton, because those signs would be placed outside of our jurisdictional limits. I did get an email from John Bergman this morning saying that the Town of Harmony approved the placement of those directional signs in the Town of Harmony by Hanky Road at their regularly scheduled board meeting last night. That agreement is obviously contingent on you folks agreeing to, you know, the city's commitments to installing the signs and maintaining them in the Town of Harmony. The Town of Milton also has this on their agenda at their regularly scheduled board meeting for tonight, so if the intergovernmental agreements are approved by both bodies, we could ask Director Robinson to put the directional signs up as early as this week or early next. Hopefully before the ground, thoughts, or I'm sorry, freezes. Wrong season.
Okay.
So, yeah, what staff is seeking is your approval in both Agenda Items E, or Letters E, is a discussion of possible action to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Town of Harmony for the placement of that directional sign at Hanky Road and Town Line, and then Agenda Item, Letter F, is for the intergovernmental agreement with the Town of Milton for the directional signs placed at Town Line and Town Hall, and Town Line and Parkview.
Questions?
I'll make a motion to accept both agreements with both the Town of Harmony and the Town of Milton for the directional placement for the signs for the city of Milton.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Do those intersections ever have any lighting?
It is not in the design for their stuff, so.
Some people expressed concern about the lack of lighting for those intersections.
As have I. And we brought that issue to their attention, as well as the issue of the guard beam on Town Line and Parkview, in a very, very substantial ditch, for which we have pictures of when it got icy going down. When we met with their engineers, Alder Person Lotter was a part of that meeting, and what they explained to there, and I think it's good because we're actually in public to talk about it, is the engineers talked about the concern about on an icy road and when they hit a guard beam, and then they come back into traffic, that the potential, the greater danger in that is them bouncing off of a guard beam and then coming into oncoming traffic than it is sliding off into the ditch. I didn't like that answer, but it made sense to me.
It, it seemed like a probability thing. It depends on if it's your car being hit or if it's an anonymous car being hit.
Right.
The state was quite adamant that they were right.
Right. And with respect to the, the lighting issue, the response that I've gotten is one of, it's not in the design, so it doesn't mean we can't keep lobbying for it, because these traffic directional signs were also not in the design. And so they have, the DOT, to their credit, after listening to our concerns and the concerns associated with finding Milton and how challenging it is through the Exit 6 route. Exit 8 is pretty straightforward, but again, it took our request to get a directional sign at the roundabouts at both sides of, of Exit 8. And so by being patient yet persistent, we've gotten seven new directional signs from the DOT that point people to Milton. So I will give Deputy Director Rose Fettle Place a lot of credit in that, because we just haven't gone away, and, and we've got seven more signs that helped motorists get to Milton because of it. So they've been willing to work with us, recognize the impact that this has on us, and with that lighting issue, if we continue to get more concerns, I would encourage people to call us or email us, and we'll let the folks that can do something about it know, because they have been responsive when we continue to do that.
Okay, I guess we took care of item F2, 5F, so general items. Anybody have any general items? Okay, our next meeting will be Tuesday, November 19th. The mayor, he's not here. Alder Person's reports, anybody have anything? City Administrator.
I've seen you work a meeting like this, staff is going to want you to run for mayor. The only thing I have is this Sunday, a pretty historic, pretty proud moment in our city's history, grand opening of the Parker YMCA, a large-scale capital project that's been in the works for years, goes back, three mayors, two administrators, couple of police chiefs in there. I mean, there's, there's been a lot of different stuff that's happened between, in 2005, when they first had that vision, 2008, they bought the property, a pretty exciting event. So 12:30 to 1:30, open house, 1:30 is the grand opening ceremony. Both Mayor Frazier and I will be speaking. I know the mayor's going to do a proclamation that day, and so if you can attend, I think it's going to be a pretty great event, and we'd love to see all there.
Okay, public courts? Nothing due tonight, okay, Police Department?
We had a couple of more flashing incidents yesterday, different subjects, two new subjects, Ivy and the Casey's yesterday, a middle-aged subject, completely different than the one at Extreme Fitness and Squeeze In, and then shortly before noon, we had another one, this time it was a juvenile doing the same thing, Second Street Madison. So we do not have any new vehicle descriptions, so, and we got very vague descriptions of these people, so we're checking with local communities to see if they've been experiencing the same thing, but it's somewhat disturbing that we have three different, potentially three different subjects doing this, and two different people in one day. So it's very odd, and we're investigating it, obviously, and if you come up with a good vehicle description on anybody, then we'll, we'll give out a press release seeking the public's help.
Library is not here, Joint Fire Department is not here, City Treasurer. Nothing today.
Next Tuesday?
Well, Tuesday's.
Okay. I don't know, can I legally read number seven, or should somebody else?
Anybody, you're a member of the council, so if you want to read it or if you want to just read somebody else's, it's up to you.
Okay, consideration of a motion to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute. Section 19.85, prayer one, prayer need, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public property, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Reference possible land annexation and industrial park development, and reference to Crossridge Business Park Land Sale. I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.